Good evening and welcome to the April 9th meeting of the Ames Community School District Board. I will take an approval for the agenda.
Move, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Briggs, seconded by Rossar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Director Rossar, will you please read the mission statement?
The mission of the Ames Community Schools is to ensure that all learners develop the knowledge, skills, attitudes, values, and personal esteem necessary to grow in and shape a changing society.
Thank you. And tonight, we have a very special presentation by Dr. Taylor.
Hopefully, this microphone's on. I want to introduce, actually, to everyone that's here, the 2018 Iowa Teacher of the Year. And it's Eileen Sullivan, who teaches science at Ames High School. So we're all very, very proud. (APPLAUSE). I wanted to, this is a great opportunity, because we sent this out to about 8,000 families, but I wanted you to see what Eileen really looks like as opposed to, she'll.[252.12][252.12](LAUGHING) This picture of her in her goggles, which is really pretty good. She was nominated and actually chosen as the Iowa Teacher of the Year in November. We've worked pretty hard to try and get her the opportunity to get here so that we can get the public recognition that she needs and so well deserves. As the governor, I think, said during the ceremonies, when you were actually named to that, he said, "You really have worked hard to make your students young chemists who collaborate and actually solve problems," which is what we're really, really up to in the district. She's been here for 22 years, and I've worked with her for about, I keep saying 10, but it's more like 15, something like that. She's also the chief negotiator for the Ames Education Association. And the reason that I am so honored and really proud of what Eileen has accomplished is that during those 15 years of working with us in negotiations, she's come to understand what school budgeting is really like. And we have done what her students do, some real serious problem solving along the years to get her to this point. She's here with her husband Joel, who's a social studies teacher at Ames High School and also the girls' basketball coach, and her two boys, both Lane and Leo. So they're right there. Again, this is a great honor, I think, for the district. It's a great honor for Eileen. She's going to be serving as an ambassador across the state to business organizations, to higher education, and to other schools. And I think it's just a great tribute, Eileen, that you've got this accomplished. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything?
Thank you so much for this recognition. And I am honored and humbled to represent Ames in the coming year and all the wonderful teachers of Iowa. And I look forward to the opportunity to meet lots of new people and bring lots of great things back to Ames.
Thank you, Eileen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, there we go.[371.53][371.53](APPLAUSE).
Eileen, on behalf of the board, thank you very much, because you make us very, very proud. I did get to hear about some of her upcoming adventures before the meeting, and she really is going to be ambassador for all of us. So you make us very proud. Thank you. We will go ahead and open the public hearing for the 2018-19 certified budget. And we do not have anyone signed up to speak. So I will go ahead and close the hearing, and that action item will be later on in the agenda. I will open the public hearing for the tennis courts. I do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
I move the board approve, I move the board award the contract for the 2018 High School Tennis Courts Project to HPC LLC in the amount of $1,560,000 for the base bid.
Second.
Moved by Deardorff, seconded by Briggs. And do we need to clarify, I know the question, do you want to add alternate number one or not? Okay, thank you. So it is just for the base bid discussion.
So if Jerry, we can talk through this, but had a discussion with Spence today, and of course, the budget came, our budget was originally $1,002,000, and we knew as a PEPL committee going into this, it was going to be over budget because of a few factors. My concern mainly is with the bids coming back being significantly over, the topic of the lighting, lighting that tennis court. And so I know we have contingency, but can you talk through our balances in the PEPL fund for contingency, and most importantly, how we're lining up our capital for projects down the road? First and foremost, I'm in all support of putting the infrastructure in to light the tennis courts, but seeing that the city is not supportive of wanting to move that forward with us in a partnership, I have less desire to want to have those lit for a small window of time when we have a bunch of other resources that we need to bring to fruition. So can you talk through the commitments for contingencies for PEPL, both for this fiscal year and next?
Sure. I try to program as many projects within the, above the contingency line in the PEPL budget. So I try to carry, this year, we're carrying $350,000 in contingency, and next year, I have $400,000. Over the last three years, I think we've averaged about $2,500 or less out of that contingency that we've expended. We also have a strong fund balance in the PEPL budget. So based on that, we are looking at being able to reach out or extend into that contingency kind of significantly for the first time. As far as other upcoming projects, we've got, I have the chiller replacement scheduled, I mean, sorry, the cooling tower replacement up at the middle school. And that one, it's not broken, and it's not failing or deteriorating at a rapid rate. So I have the luxury, I guess, of being able to push that off a year, to set that back one year. Other future projects, we've got down the road, a couple of years from now, there's nothing really pressing or urgently ready to reach its life cycle or life expectancy. So I think overall, we're in pretty good shape as far as being able to withstand this cost.
And Jerry, if we, this includes putting in the infrastructure for the lighting, so that when we're ready to put in the lighting, we can. So passing this tonight, if we were to decide next year, if PEPL committee comes back and says, "Well, let's go ahead and do it after they're up and constructed," would we possibly be able to do that next year?
Yes, yeah. One other project that's coming up is the camera project, as far as being able to respond to the homeland security and budgets and so on. So we're in the process of getting that, and that one could have an impact and might, I think we'd be able to cover that with additionally with pushing that chiller project back, but that's one other one I've.
Yeah, and that's some of the, I think, some of the concerns that we had was, you know, with a few what-ifs out there that we're still working on with these dollars for this year's and next year's budget, that it might be wise to just hold off on that.
The other reality and positive issue that we have in our favor is that with the new buildings, we're less likely to have something catastrophic or major to all of a sudden go wrong and be surprised. So I do have things planned in the budget within their life expectancy. So I've got roofs planned at 22 and 1/2 years and 23 and 1/2 years or so on, and then 45, so we can get the best efficiency out of that. And I mean, that's a quick and easy example, but so I'm trying to get those things programmed. But with the new buildings, we've got, we don't have as much exposure or risk, I think, as far as having to dip or needing to dip into that contingency fund.
And also, the board's action tonight would result in the tennis courts being built this summer.
Yes.
And so they'd be up and running for the fall or for next spring?
Next spring.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay.
So really, my concern, just to elaborate again, is spending $86,000 to outline, to outlay funding for lighting for potentially a few weeks of support of the tennis season. I just don't know if that's a great use of capital, knowing what stuff's out on the horizon.
That there's other stuff out there. Yep.
I just want to ask for clarification. So you put in the amount of $1,560,000.
Oh, yes.
But it would be an adjusted amount.
Correct. It should be the $1,474.
So now we're going to have an amendment.
I move to amend the motion to read.
I'll just correct it.
You can just clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, perfect.
So just to make sure everyone's understanding that, so the amount is $1,474,000. That removes the $86,000, which was in alternate one for the lights. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, so the motion is on the table to award the contract for the 2018 High School Tennis Courts Project to HPC LLC in the amount of $1,474,000 for base bid. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. I will go ahead and read the statement on discussion items. Residents of the district, students attending the district, parents or guardians of students attending the district, and district staff members may address the board about any topic relevant to the district, whether on the current agenda or not. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker participation is limited to three minutes once per item. The views and opinions of citizens addressing the board do not necessarily reflect those of the board, district administration, or staff. Speakers are to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. Student speakers will state their name and school; others will state their name and address. And our first discussion item tonight is committee work. Any board members want to provide any additional information?
Nobody's going to jump on that, I will. We're going to be talking more specifically about the property tax backfill issue that popped up a few weeks ago to our surprise and frustration. So I won't get into it in too much of a detail, just that the issue is primarily in the Senate right now. It will have to go back to the Assembly, excuse me, to the House. But it would have a dramatic impact if it were to pass of cutting our next year's, our school districts' next year's budget by $1.3 million. So we're very disappointed that the legislature is even thinking about it. So hopefully, we can put pressure on them to do that. We're going to be considering a resolution here shortly to express our opposition to that. The other two items I want to point out to the public, and we've been working on, is the continued extension of the save or penny sales tax that needs to be extended from 2029 to 2049 or '50. That is something that's still in the Senate for discussion. It's had a couple of different amendments, but we're still feeling positive that it's going to go through. But any opportunities that you have to send an email or let legislators know that that's important to our funding for our school infrastructures, buildings, in ongoing year, in years to come. And then lastly, I'd like to point out that one of the ones that we've talked about in the past, the legislature is still considering, has not passed yet, is a school shaming or school lunch funding bill that would provide consistency throughout the state about giving school districts more flexibility in dealing with negative funds in lunch balances, but also putting restrictions on the fact that they can't use various things that shame students or to ensure also that students are provided lunch every day, regardless of what the student debt, their individual student debt is. But that's being considered still in the, both the Senate, it's passed the House and is currently in the Senate for debate.
Thank you for the update, Director Rossar. Any other updates on committee work? Any comments from the public on committee work? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to item six, policies to announce.
Okay. Well, on these policies, I'll start with the last three. Open enrollment in, open enrollment out, and student use of information resources and computer networks. These policies themselves have no language changes, any changes that have been made. Those three policies were done in admin rules, per the packet that was presented.
501.7 and 5101.8 are brand-new policies.
Brand-new policies, okay. Mic correction.
Sorry.
So that's why there's no language changes. So that's what those are. And then the top three, admission of resident students was clarification as to what is a resident student. Admission of non-resident students had information, I'll have to look at it quick here. Information was stricken from it. I believe that information was placed out for reasons of being confusing, more than anything. They didn't bring clarity to the policy. Beyond that, any changes, and there were very miniscule language issues. And the last one would be the assignment of students to schools. And the main point there is it just gives clarification to the practice that the administration has of currently placing students.
So as is our policy tonight, we introduce them. Next meeting, we will discuss them, and our meeting after that, they will be up on our action items. Any comments from the public on these proposed policies? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to public forum, and I have Karen Stein signed up to speak.
Good evening. I am Karen Stein. Live at 25003 Rich Top Road in Iowa. The purpose for talking to you tonight is to remind you to please do something about hiring Wilson Program, a certified trainer, especially now that we have the administration leaving and we have a new administration coming. We missed last year sending our teachers to Girls Academy, which would have been a great place for them to train for Wilson. And specifically looking at Gina Perez and Demet Colton, because you're both in the Teaching and Learning Committee, so I'm asking you both and everybody else, too, to please make sure that we train our teachers by certified trainers. This is a great program, and I know it's helped a great deal. Fellows Elementary is not the number-one school just because we've had this program now for three years. At the same token, we've had teachers who have retired or moved on from kindergarten first and second grade. So we need to continue this program, because we are seeing a great improvement in our students and also our teachers. And Fellows Elementary, as far as I know, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, Dr. Taylor, is possibly the only elementary that even though we have free and reduced lunch, it doesn't impact our learning for our kids. There's no difference whether you bring home lunch or school lunch. I'm not saying the program is perfect, because there's no such thing, but it's made a huge improvement at Fellows Elementary. So I'd like to bring that opportunity to all of our elementary schools, and I don't see any reason why all of our elementary should be the number-one elementary schools in the state of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to consent items.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Briggs, seconded by Deardorff.
We've got minutes from the meeting held on March 26th and April 4th from Chris, also the personnel report from Lisa Higginson. Also on the consent item tonight are gifts to the district, including, and we have, or we did have, it must have left, we had a large check, actually, from Fresh Time Farmers Market that was sitting over there and disappeared between 3 o'clock and now, but I will find it and bring it back.
It's back by Eric's office.
It's back by Eric's office. Somebody took it away. You can't cash that call, so it doesn't make any difference.[1328.83][1328.83](LAUGHING). But it was $7,753.36 that the Fresh Time Farmers Market raised for the district for overdue lunch accounts to pay the debt down. We also had a $20 cash anonymous donation for overdue lunch accounts, office supplies from Dow Agro Science to the district, and four Lego We Do Kits valued at $1,232 from Donors Choose to the Maker Space. There are three contracts for approval, including the updated Hoggett School Agreement, the agreement with ISU for the use of the cross-country course for middle school meet on September 17th of 2018, an agreement with ISU for the use of Hilton Coliseum for the high school graduation on May 27th, 2018. There's the annual district vehicle purchase from Jerry out of the PEPL fund, and also annual equipment purchase from the same fund for the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you. Moved by Briggs, seconded by Deardorff. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Our first auction, action item, excuse me, geo bond prepayment.
If you recall, when I went through the budget last meeting, I said that the timing on the geo bond was a little tricky with the way my budget had to be published. So we were waiting to see, and thankfully, the referendum passed overwhelmingly, to see how we would structure our debt service for next year. So we are going to do what we call a pre-levy, is actually called by legal counsel or bond counsel, a prepayment. So the first resolution is a prepayment in the amount of $3,195,000 to pay off the elementary geo bonds. And then the second resolution will be what bond counsel calls pre-levy, which will allow us to issue $5 million of bonds before the end of this fiscal year. So those are the only two things that in budget have changed, and I'll talk about that when I get to the budget item.
I think one thing for the board to understand on item 13 on the geo bond prepayment, what that does is it buys down our debt, and it will save the district and the community, actually, $615,000 in interest payments.
I move the resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation school bonds, Series 2013 dated June 4th, 2013, approving the First Amendment to ESCRO and amended and substituted paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and levying a tax for fiscal year 2018-19 for the redemption of general obligation school bonds, Series 2013 dated June 4th, 2013.
Second.
Then moved by Deardorff, seconded by Rossar, discussion. Seeing none, we will vote on roll call. Colton, aye.
Rossar, aye.
Benkin, aye.
Deardorff, aye.
Franzen, aye.
Briggs, aye.
Perez, aye.
Passes seven zero. Item 14.
Move the resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5 million general obligation school bonds, Series 2018, and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
Second. Moved by Briggs, seconded by Perez, discussion. We'll vote on roll call, please.
Colton, aye.
Rossar, aye.
Benkin, aye.
Deardorff, aye.
Franzen, aye.
Briggs, aye.
Perez, aye.
Passes seven zero. Item 15, certified budget.
I move the board adopt the 2018-2019 certified budget as presented.
Second. Moved by Rossar, seconded by Benkin, discussion.
So the packet that you received for the budget this meeting is just slightly different than what you had received at the last meeting. The differences appear on page 22, which is the bond schedules. It shows a pre-levy of $3,195,000 for next year. That previously had been $3,645,000. So we're doing a pre-levy of $3,195,000, and we are doing then on the bonds that we expect to issue before the end of June. There'll be a principal payment next fiscal year of $250,000 and interest payment of $200,000. The total amount that we were levying for debt service did not change. It just changed between the pre-levy for the old bonds and payment on the new bonds that we will issue. And you'll see that change reflected through the debt service documents. It does look like at this point, based on cash flows that we have received from Story Kenworthy, now all this is subject to change, based on how, when we get things out to bid and how the programming and design goes. But it does look like we will be able to pre-levy again in 2020 and have the elementary bonds paid off. In the previous schedules, I was showing them kind of ladders with all the new bonds for the high school. I'm not saying that might not still happen, but at this point, based on Tim Oswald's and my best estimate, we should be able to have the elementary bonds paid off in 2020 and then start with the payments on the new bonds. But subject to change.
I'd just like to thank Chris and all their staff and the Budget Audit Committee. There's a lot of work that goes into this, and thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been moved by Rossar, seconded by Benkin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Meal prices for fiscal year 2018-19.
I move the board approve breakfast and lunch prices for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Moved by Perez, seconded by Briggs, discussion.
You do have a revised copy. I forgot to change the years at the top. I copied the columns over and then forgot to go back and change the top of that column. So it is for the 18-19 school year. Usually, at this time of year, we're receiving from the federal Department of Agriculture something called the Price Lunch Equity Tool, which we have to go and fill in all our financial information, and it tells us whether we have to increase student meals or not. I don't know what's going on with the Department of Ed, but what we got was they noticed that for the 18-19 school year, there will be no PLE, and as long as we had a positive fund balance in our nutrition fund at the end of January, we didn't have to do anything with student meal prices. So I'm not. However, it is mandated that the adult and guest lunches go up by 10 cents, and basically, the way those are calculated is the three components that make up how much we get reimbursed from the federal government for meals. There's three different portions of that, and it adds up to $3.63 for next year, and rather than trying to refund or (LAUGHING). rather than trying to refund or change everybody 2 cents, I'm just recommending $3.65 for those meals.
Thank you for the explanation on that, Chris.
There were some, I can, sorry, I can't remember, but some proposed changes I thought the federal government was going to maybe push down. Do we know of what may be coming down the pipe?
Proposed changes in...
As far as like sugar and you have ketchup again.
My understanding is that they have delayed the implementation on the stricter nutrition guidelines and I believe the biggest one of that was on the sodium content, which was, at least Kate's gone now, I miss Kate, but that was going to be one of the most difficult to implement was to get down to the sodium levels they want. So I do know that one's been delayed. I don't know if they will ever implement it, but it's been delayed at this point till whatever they decide to tell us.
Thank you.
Chris, just for clarification, I just want to be sure I understand. So basically you had to go through the process, but there won't be any change in the price for what students pay for school lunch, is that correct?
No, because we had a $600,000 positive fund balance at the end of January, we didn't have to, usually there's this tool and you have to put in your prices and they do it against this calculation against what they're reimbursing, which is also what causes the adult, but that tool for some reason is not being pushed out by the federal government. So instead of telling us to guess, they just said, if you have a positive fund balance, don't worry about it, you can do what you want with your, so we could have increased them. I would not recommend decreasing. Our fund is healthy, but it's not extravagant. So I would, so we just couldn't, and that might have caused us another problem. Next year, if we decreased them, we might have had a 20 or 30 cent increase. So we're better off just leaving them where they are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's been moved by Perez, seconded by Briggs. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 7-0. Item 17, Resolution to the Iowa Legislature and Governor Reynolds.
I move the board approve any restrictions on the backfill for the 2018-19 and that this opposition should be communicated to the Iowa Legislature and Governor Reynolds and that the Ames Community School District believes that changes to the backfill should be decided with participation of local government leaders with adequate notice and that every effort be made to avoid local property tax increases.
Second. Moved by Rossar, seconded by everybody, no, Bankin. Discussion. I think something I just want to comment about, ironically, I think at our last meeting when Director Rossar was giving his update on what's going on at the State House, we talked about that our role is to really advocate for what we believe is in the best interest of our school district. Little did we know that this would come so quickly in two weeks and so that is what is behind this. We are, we are looking out for the Ames Community School District and the, as it was mentioned earlier, the, what is being studied at the State House would require us, if it were to go through it, would require us to find $1.3 million in our budget to make up. And that is a really difficult thing for a school district. It's I think $996,000 in our general fund and that's our precious fund that we pay our teachers from. And so this is why we did decide to move forward and put this on the agenda because we do believe that it's the responsibility of, of the school district to make sure that we're advocating for our students, so.
Maybe just a little more clarification. We were, actually, I received a letter from a member of the Iowa Senate that indicated that this was being debated and it's quite possible that it would come forward. In 2013, the governor at that time elected to sign a bill that would decrease commercial property taxes. When you decrease the commercial property taxes, obviously that would decrease the revenue to the school districts, to the counties and to the states. Over the protests, the legislature then decided that what they would do is fund $150 million back to schools, to counties and to city governments to fill in, that's the word, backfill comes forward, to backfill the money that we would be losing in revenue for public schools. What is coming out of the Ways and Means Committee in discussion and Director Rossar could correct me on that, but what we're afraid of is because the legislature is looking for adjournment in the next two weeks, if not less, that they're pushing something through real fast that would eliminate that $150 million with the backfill, thus causing us a $1.3 million deficit that we would have to try and make up this year one way or another. I don't, at this point, Chris and I have taken a really hard look at that. There's no indication that they would still maintain our spending authority. If they did, that would mean that we could increase our property taxes to help cover that. And when we were doing the referendum for the schools, the new high school, please remember, I said, your property taxes will not go up as a result of this project. I can't control the legislature. And here we go. So we're in that situation and what the board is doing with the resolution is putting together a resolution that we'll send to that senator who will then present it hopefully at the legislature and to the governor will make a, make a difference and they won't, won't do this to us, let's put it that way.
And the, let me just add a little bit to this. Originally, this idea of not funding the backfill first started being discussed in the House and earlier in this legislative session. At that time, they were only talking about the cities and the counties. They weren't really schools they were going to hold harmless and not include them, at least in the foreseeable future, at least, definitely not next year in fiscal year 19. So when the discussion then finally, after the second funnel of the legislative process, then out of Ways and Means Committee in the Senate, they, they came out with their version and it did include schools to not receive that, to backfill. Now, there are a lot of different numbers. The best we can estimate right now is the 1.3, $900,000 of that coming out of our general fund, which is the fund that we use to pay for student programs, teachers, teachers' salaries and benefits, you know, the real important part of what our school district is all about. And that's, that's our concern, is if we lose that money, that's gonna, you know, how do we make that up in one year or in a matter of just a couple of weeks? So, you know, not having, you know, given us this, some type of, you know, for opportunity to discuss with them, this was just sprung on us. There was no discussion of, of this last year prior to the legislature coming to session when the governor proposed her, her budget for this year related to education. There was no mention of this at all. This was just kind of pulled out of, out of thin air. So it is critical that we get our voices out there along with other school districts. We're being joined by many, many school districts throughout the state, but we also want to take this opportunity to encourage you. I mean, sure, we can take our, our action here, which is important, but, and we can personally call our legislators and such and let them know, but sometimes they get tired of hearing from us. It's much more powerful when, when, when other constituents, those of you sitting here in the audience and those of you that are at home, you know, send an email, send a letter, pick up a phone call because many of these legislators answer their own phone, seriously. And let them know how you feel about it and the direct, you know, negative impact it will have on the Ames Community School District next year.
Yeah, I would, I would add, no matter where you lie in the political spectrum of life, I think we all agree that the education of our youth is paramount. It's disheartening that over the years, the Iowa Legislature continues to underfund education and to hear now that they want to take away a promise that was made because of cuts that they chose to make is, is even more disheartening that we couldn't get more money for education and now they want to take money away.
Director Rossar, do you have a sense about even if we are able to stop this activity this particular fiscal year, if this will be a continuing battle, is this going to come back, will this die? What's your sense?
That's a good question. It really depends on the future funding of the rest of the budget and revenues for the state. You know, I think that this was kind of pulled, pulled out as a, one of the options to help balance the budget in some ways.
I see.
Not necessarily, I hope, I'm a positive thinker, I hope that they didn't bring this up to hurt education. I wouldn't even insinuate that even. Because, but I think it's there, you know, some leader's way of, to fill other budget holes that they're projecting. So that really depends on what, what's going to happen next year in fiscal 19 and fiscal 20, whether, because here's the other dynamic here, there's a lot of different numbers being thrown out. So there, in the House, they talked about scaling it back over a five-year period, kind of phasing these cuts in, whereas the approach in the Senate is much more immediate. It's phased in over two or three years. So, and, you know, as we speak, literally, as they get into debate this week, those numbers are going to change. I'm going to speculate. So even though we're talking about, you know, our guesstimate being 1.3, you know, that could go up, that could go down. We, again, they're throwing around a lot of different numbers right now.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved by Rossar, seconded by Bankin, and this is on roll call.
Colton, aye.
Rossar, aye.
Bankin, aye.
Deardorff, aye.
Franzen, aye.
Briggs, aye.
Perez, aye.
Passes 7-0. Item 18, Resolution to set a public hearing.
I might just explain this one because it probably is a little confusing. We act, this is for the Crawford Building, which we actually sold last May. The purchasers have been having trouble getting a clear title, which is affecting their ability to finance the facility. When we approved the documents last year, school district, school buildings that are older tend to kind of be hodgepodge together on how they were acquired by school districts. I know I've seen cases where it was a handwritten note from a farmer giving us part of a 40-acre plot. And so we try to do the best legal description we can when we publish, but then we also put in the, in the public notice, also publicly known, or locally known as 415 Stanton Avenue, which satisfies the statutory requirement when we put in that local address. However, it has been affecting their, the fact that the, the legal description was not exactly right has been affecting their ability to get a title. We give them a quick claim deed. So they have asked us to redo the public hearing and publish a new published, public notice with the legal description that they would like to see in that public notice and then refile everything with the recorder's office after we take action at the next meeting. So in case you're wondering why this is back on the agenda, that is why.
I move we approve the resolution authorizing that this board shall set a public hearing on the conveyance of the above described property for April 23rd, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the boardroom at the Ames, at the district offices at 2005 24th Street, Ames, Iowa, and that the secretary is authorized and directed to prepare, publish and distribute the notice of hearing.
Second.
Moved by Deardorff, seconded by Briggs, discussion. Seeing none, we will vote on roll call.
Colton, aye.
Rossar, aye.
Bankin, aye.
Deardorff, aye.
Franzen, aye.
Briggs, aye.
Perez, aye.
Passes 7-0. Item 19, the new high school construction architect contract with OPN.
I move the board approve the agreement for architectural services with OPN Architects for construction of a new high school building, including a swimming pool with correction shown in Exhibit M.
Second.
Oh, second.
Moved by Briggs, seconded by Bankin, discussion.
That's what I meant.
Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 7-0. Item 20, Design Services for Relocation of Fellows Crosswalk.
I move the board approve the agreement for professional services with WHKS and Company for the Fellows Elementary Traffic Sign and Traffic Flow Reconfiguration in the amount of $15,700.
Second.
Moved by Rossar, seconded by Briggs, discussion.
Sure, Jerry, come on up. You can just, as Chris does, you can explain what we're doing here and...
Yeah, I admit to being confused about all of this. I think because it's not my school, I don't really understand it. So maybe for people who just aren't familiar with Fellows, you could help us understand it a little bit.
Yeah, and where the funds are coming from, too.
Okay, yes. At the Fellows Elementary School, there's a, a crosswalk, a pedestrian crosswalk that was in place and it was properly located for the old school. When we built the new school and demolished the old school, it wasn't necessarily in the same right spot. So there wasn't a clear and decisive and easy final answer, where do we need to put it? So we, we agreed, we met with the community and we agreed with, let's try a test location. So we've got a temporary signal that we put at the west end of the bus lane as a test. And so the feedback that we've got from the pedestrians and also from the traffic and from the staff in the school has been very positive. That has made a great improvement on the traffic flow, on the pedestrian safety. However, when we did, we met with the community and the staff, the neighbor whose front yard this light was in was not very pleased with that. In fact, it was basically the, the, the hand on, across the street, the pink hand shines right into his front door at that location. So we were getting close, but that wasn't the right spot to make the investment and install, install the permanent signal there. So we looked at sliding that to the west and we could slide that to the west so that it would actually align up with the property line between him and his neighbor, or we could take it west even a little bit farther on the other side of the neighbor's approach, but that would put it kind of in front of his front door, so that wouldn't be desirable. And so our, we, we aren't able to find the best spot, but we can maybe find the least bad spot. So I think, but this is the best spot that I think that, that we can serve. The one challenge with that is that there's a small area between the two driveways and rather than putting just a short sidewalk to get from the sidewalk to the curb in order to be able to make that hard surface connection for the crosswalk, we decided, we thought we'd go ahead and pave that entire area. It'll take less maintenance, the grass is going to likely die anyway if, if there's, the pedestrians accumulate. There was a concern expressed about kids being in the driveways. I think there's a couple of things that we can, or actions or steps that we can take to alleviate that. One is to be able to make sure we modify or pay close attention to the timing on the signal. With the temporary signal, pedestrian can come up and press the button, there's a short time span, the lights turn yellow, the lights turn red, and then they have the ability to cross the street. And I was able to test this when they put the temporary signal up with my crutches. So I could crutch across the street with the amount of time. So if that, if I could hobble across that way, I thought that that would be allowed, at least a safe enough time for younger kids. The signal then turns back to green so that it doesn't hold the traffic up a lot. If there's subsequent pedestrians and they push the button, it kind of resets that red light cycle or the time to cross the walk. So I think paying close attention to the timing is also going to help to alleviate the pileup, or not pileup, but the accumulation of pedestrians on the south side. The other thing is just the reality of it is that it drop off and pickup time, that's when it's more likely to accumulate. So as requested by board leadership, we're going to, we have, I'm working to set up a meeting with Brandon Schrout, the principal, to be able to get the community group and the neighbors back together and just run this past them, too, the concern about accumulating the pedestrians on the south side. So in either case, I think we've, we've kind of come to the conclusion that the light or the traffic signal is going to be more beneficial and useful and safer if we relocate it. And so what this proposal is to be able to get the professional design services so we can start that process. Any questions?
This is just a great example of working with the community to figure out the solution. So I thank the parents that are very patient throughout this process. We've, we're moving this forward in the right way, which is one more step to make sure it's the right location. So thanks, Jerry, for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved by Rossar, seconded by Briggs, discussion. Moved by Rossar, seconded by Briggs. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Item twenty-one, two thousand eighteen nineteen student fees.
Move the board approve the student fees and rights for voluntary purchases as presented.
Second.
Moved by Briggs, seconded by Rossar. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Item twenty-two, open enrollment applications.
I move the board approve the open enrollment request for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year as presented.
Second.
Moved by Perez, seconded by Briggs. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Items from the board.
What an efficient meeting.
I'd just like to thank the community for supporting the bond referendum. Talking with people after the vote came down, it's wonderful to see the community overwhelmingly support this, up to eighty-five percent. So, I think people from all walks of life see the value in public education and want our community to move forward. So, thank you, and we're gonna all bring a great product to our community.
I'd also like to add to that by saying, it's wonderful statement that the community is sent in support of the school district. But even more important, it's, I'm looking forward to, you know, having the community's input on what I feel is, not only a high school, you know, it's the highs for the students, but it's a community. It's where the community gathers also. So, you know, keep that in mind, I'm sure we're gonna be having some people with some ideas, but please share those with us. This is the time to do that, as we go through the design process. And then lastly, I'm very pleased, too, also, with the timing of this. You know, we're also going through the process of hiring a new superintendent. And one of the things that made me feel really good Tuesday night when the results were coming in was what a wonderful message this sends to whoever we ultimately hire as the new superintendent, that they're walking into not just a job, but a position in which they know that the community really supports this, the district, and that's, that's a, that's gonna be a good feeling for them. So, that, I think, is a wonderful thing for the community to be sending to that individual.
I just wanna, since you said something about the superintendent search, I just wanna say how honored I am to be doing this work with all of you. And we had our first close, my first closed session meeting. I'll pack a snack next time. That was a long meeting. But, I am so honored to do this.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things that I will add. I think, first, I wanna thank Dr. Taylor. I think that we can give the presentation in our sleep for the bond referendum, but we really tried to reach out and inform the public, and really communicated that the work of pulling together the information on the high school was really the work of two different boards, because we had the board that was with us up until September, and then bringing three new members on this fall. And we really studied it, and studied it very thoroughly. And our message to the community was that it is our job as the Board of Directors to present an opportunity, and it's the community's job to then give us direction on where to go. And it is very pleasing when you work very hard on something for two and a half years to have the community support it in the manner that it was supported. So, thank you, community, for coming out and making your voice heard. We will work very hard with our architects and construction manager to roll out the next phase of it, and we're looking forward to it. On the superintendent search, yes, we are in the process of vetting and working through this process. This week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we will meet again, not Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We will be together in closed session. We are bringing in five finalists to interview with us in closed session following this. Our goal is to identify two finalists to bring into our community next Tuesday and Wednesday. And on next Tuesday and Wednesday, we have a full group of focus groups that will be meeting with these finalists. I would really encourage the public, both on April seventeenth and on April eighteenth, there will be an opportunity for the public to come to a forum with these candidates at five fifteen here in the district office. We have started to advertise it, but we will continue to push it out a little bit more. But we are really excited, and I think we all know that we have a very big responsibility in front of us. But I think the biggest thing I would say is, we have a great school district, and we've got lots of things that we need to work on, but we really have a great school district, and so we're really looking forward to this next phase. Items from the staff.
April and May are always busy. The certified budget is one that is required by the state, that Chris works so diligently on, including the Aiden Levy worksheet, and that's due on the fifteenth, so we're right on schedule to have that in on time. As we move into the next meeting on April twenty-third, we'll be coming forward with the general fund budget, which is the superintendent's budget on expenditures from the general fund. We've got special ed updates, and the TLC update is also scheduled for this particular month. As we move into May, we'll have graduation lists, we'll have reappointment of staff, we'll approve hopefully the superintendent's budget. The board meeting schedule for eighteen nineteen, I see, is on the list, along with commencement, which is again on the, I think it's the twenty-seventh of May. We'll all be there, I'm certain. And next, or this coming month, May is School Board Recognition Month, so we'll wanna certainly have a small celebration for the board, and maybe we'll increase your salary for next year, see how that one works.
Double it.
Yeah. I just wanna finish by saying thanks to the community also for support of that referendum. It takes a lot of horses to pull a wagon train, and so it wasn't done by one person, it was done by a lot of people, including the previous board, this board, a lot of community people really were out there with boots on the ground, knocking on doors and getting people excited. All of those people played a very major role. And I know our board president was with me three days last week, on, actually, the week before that, we, over a period of three days, gave seven presentations across the city. We also gave one on the Monday morning before the referendum, and I think all of those were very successful. I was pretty confident that we were gonna have success. I could never have imagined eighty-five percent, or nearly eighty-five percent approval. But that's a wonderful message to a lot of the people that are sitting right directly in front of me, that they are valued, and that's why we're here. So, thank you to the community and to the staff for putting in all that work.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second. Moved by Briggs, seconded by Perez. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Thanks for coming.